I call to order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education for Wednesday, October 20th, 2021. Begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Slippery things to the flag, United States, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
May I have the roll call please?
This is Brad Hart here. This is Kukowski here. Mr. Geisberg. Mr. Beckering?
Here.
Mr. Allenali?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Thank you. Resolved to accept the agenda as amended?
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Reggie, I don't know how much time you need.
I agree.
Resolved to accept the minutes of the October 6th, 2021 regular meeting as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? I will abstain because I was not there. This brings us to our first opportunity to address the board. And for those, if there's anyone attending via Zoom, you can use the QA button at the bottom and post something in there. There will be another opportunity later on and we'll read it at that time. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a statement? Thank you. Resolved that the reading of the non-certificated personnel memorandum, 2021-17, and the addendum be waived, and that the action items dated October 20th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools?
The move.
Okay.
Any discussion? Mr. Brown, we have three monitors listed on this memo, and we are certainly thankful for Miranda and Alicia and DJ for serving in this capacity. We always need folks serving in those positions, so we're thankful. We're also excited to have Justin Ghul on this memorandum as a custodial substitute, and we are certain he'll lead those folks, so very happy for that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Extentions? Thank you. Resolved that the reading of the teaching and administrative personnel memorandum, 2021-17, and the addendum be waived, and that the action items dated October 20th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools?
The move.
Second. Any discussion? Yes, thank you. We have eight substitute teachers on this memo, and that is wonderful. As, yeah, substitutes are a rare commodity these days, so we're extremely thankful for their interest in our district. You'll also note that there are four additional assignments for our excellent all-ness teachers, and that's in support of the middle school tutoring program, which is a great resource for our kids, so thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Extentions? Brings us to our superintendent's report. All right, thank you very much. Very quickly, in terms of capital project, you will note shortly in Mr. McGinnis' business manager's report, a couple of change orders for blending electors. This is work that was done previously. We're just finally getting things buttoned up, but this inches us closer to closing out that project, which is certainly good news. So we're thankful for that. There's a couple more change orders that need to be processed, but we're getting closer. Very quickly, just want to share a COVID-19 student weekly testing update. Met with BOSIs earlier in this week and the manufacturer of the rapid antigen test Abbott, the vaccine now test that we use. You know, right now, they are about two to three weeks from being received by BOSIs. And we surveyed parents. What we're going to do now is send out an confirmatory message just to make sure that everyone who has opted their children into testing wanted to do that, just to make sure. So that will be happening soon. You know, again, we still have a little ways to go. The availability of tests are a little bit of a concern, but hopefully that supply chain will straighten itself out moving forward. We'll also use that data to determine the additional staff that we may need to accomplish this. So, you know, full steam ahead of that. And Mr. McGinnis, I know has something that you'd like to share this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to myself to thank all of you for serving on the Board of Education. Your service to the student community is so very appreciated. That being said, I also would like to thank the mayor, Larry Cruzey, who has provided proclamation, which I'll read out loud. Whereas each school board recognition week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the entire state. And whereas the men and women serving as members of school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community. They devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education and continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education. And whereas the members of New York's local school boards are community leaders who provide an invaluable resource as local decision-makers, responding not only to the respective educational needs of their communities, but also serving in the interests of the schoolchildren and their future. And whereas during the week of October 18th through 22nd, 2021, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in service of the school board recognition week. And it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and the contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, I, Eric Hertz, the mayor of the city of Oneonta, do hereby proclaim the week of October 18th through 22nd, 2021, as school board recognition week in the city of Oneonta, and encourage all residents to extend their good wishes and support to the Oneonta City School District Board members, Bill Grau, Amy Fernsworth, Susan Kukowski, Darren Geisberg, Sean Beckering, Mike Allenali, Kai Nally, excuse me, and Joe Tannen. We also have some of these for teaching the board members from the mayor. Thank you so very much for the service you provide our community.
Thank you, Reggie. Mr. Brown, we, as you know, how much we appreciate everything you do. I know there's a few folks from the administrative team who'd like to send a message to you as well.
I'm going to cut the end of my question. By no means director of ITC Services, and I would like to extend my thanks and appreciation to the board because of the connections in the community that you both bring to the district as a very tactile example. Our conference day, was it just last week? Two weeks ago, we were coming up short for technology, just like the technology we're using in here for the board meeting, and I was able to reach out to Mr. Brown. He was able to loan us and not charge two more systems like that to be able to have some virtual speakers at that conference day. That's very much appreciated to have that sort of quality in front of us, so thank you.
First of all, I would like to know the attitude of Kat and her students meeting. You're going to watch your podcast. Because like we had, she's home watching game five.
Who else did that?
Right, well, this is board of education. So, we have the Oneonta Principals Association. We want you to know how appreciative we are for your commitment of time, energy, and expertise to our district. We greatly value the support you offer from all of our schools and to us as school principals that we work to support our students, our teachers, and our community. It does not go without us, so thank you.
I can start from next. Colleen, board director, curriculum instruction. And I really can't say enough about this Board of Education. I think back of a day when I was at Heart of Plains, and the first time I was presenting to the Board of Education, and Michael Shea was the superintendent. And I remember standing and shaking so bad that I had to like hold on to the table, and I just looked at the board members and just realized that, you know, I didn't need to be so nervous because you definitely are so supportive and have always been a great, a great group of people. And I know there's lots of boards out there, I've heard lots of stories, and I've never, ever heard one about our Oneonta City School District Board. I feel like no matter what you do here, you're behind us 100%, and I really appreciate that. And just the fact that some of you have been on the board for so long is just so wonderful. So thank you very much for your service. We really appreciate it, and thanks for supporting all of us.
Hi, Pam Curry, Director of Special Ed. Since joining Oneonta in January, it has been such an honor to be able to work with you and your support me in my new role and this new position. Throughout my 20 question years of public education, I have taught and worked across the country, and I've worked with many boards. There's never been a board where I have felt the level of support and concern and dedication that I have from all of you, so I just appreciate that. And it's been real honor to work with all of you.
Amanda Anderson, I'm the school coordinator, and I just want to thank you all for the work that you do every day. Not just here, but what I love about coming to the Board of Education is that every single time that I'm here, somebody on the board is sharing something that they already made out in the community, one of the games you've attended, an event you've attended. So it's not just that you're here behind the scenes. You're out there supporting our kids and our teachers and our coaches and all of those things. So as a real fan, we appreciate you so much, and just thank you for the work that you do.
Reggie Brown, Mr. Brown, so I'll keep this short, just like our names supposed to be. On behalf of so many of the bannered communication, I'd like to just say thank you for your dedication and your commitment to the Oneonta City School system, and also for providing us with all the tools we need to maintain clean and healthy, happy environments for our students to stay. Thank you. Thank you all. Lastly, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Um, yeah, I also want to say thank you on behalf of the business office for all the time and commitment. I know, you know, at other schools, I've heard from board members, they say, "Oh, I thought it was just a couple of meetings a month," and that's far more than that. And with our office, we're kind of behind the scenes, but our results are very public. And I think this board is really supportive, and it's not always the same thoughts or same opinions. And I just really appreciate the fact that we're working as a team, whether it's a thought-provoking question, recommendation, you know, anything like that. So it's not just a stamp. I think that you're just, you're representative of all of the stakeholders in this district while still being highly supportive of this team and being a part of this team. And we want to say thank you on behalf of the business office.
Thank you, Alicia. Lastly, if I may, you know, Colleen had mentioned it, and it is true. You know, just based on the level of interaction that I've had, especially over the last 18 months with other school districts all over New York State, they simply are not as lucky as we are. Our board has a, just this unwavering support for students. You know, all of your decisions are driven by what's in the best interest of our students, and that is unmatched. Your compassion, your level of care, your support. And Lisa's right, many people don't quite realize, you know, how involved these positions are and how important they are. And just can't thank you enough, not only for what you have done, for what you are doing, and for what you will do. So we know that this is only one week out of the year, but please know how much we certainly appreciate everything that you do. Thank you, Mr. Brown. That concludes my report. Thank you. I'm untouched. I really appreciate all of that. You know, I've said this before, that it's great that the proclamation is brand. I feel a little awkward because I'm just kind of the kind of person that just wants to do the job, and, you know, so I appreciate the recognition. Although I think, you know, those of you who are here every day and involved with our kids every day are really the heroes, so write that back, yeah, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the business manager's report. Resolved that the reading of the financial memorandum, 2021-15, be waived, and that the action items dated October 20th, 2021 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools? The move. Second. Discussion?
Okay, so Mr. Brown, I already mentioned the two change orders on there. We also have a couple of donations. I think value is going to take the prize for the donations that you have, you know, different agenda. They have some on there. So they have some more instruments and some bounty bands. And then the consultant service contract is paid for out of the student fund grant, and that's for tutoring services for students that are residents of our districts but that attend a private school in Albany. So some of our Title I funding is directed to them, and that's what they'll be using for tutoring those students. All we have on there.
Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Extentions? Thank you. Resolved to approve the audit report of Raymond G. Processor, CPA PC, as presented?
The move.
Any discussion here?
So we did discuss this yesterday. The auditor attended the finance audit committee meeting and went through some of this. We were given the full report, the extra classroom activity report, and the summary report, and hard copies were given to the audit committee, but if anybody really feels like they really want a hard copy, I got an extract. So just let me know, we can have that. It was a clean audit, and, you know, a lot of other people commented on it if there's anything, but I missed it, it's unmodified, which means it was clean, there were no findings. The one thing that I will note is that, and they didn't write it as a finding, but that our fund balance was over the 4%, which they expected this year, you know, especially with the schools not spending in different areas. But if you look at our notes on, you know, the district's future, we will, we do expect a funding flip, so we need to just be responsible with what we have now so that we can stabilize and balance things later. Let's see, so it does, it does talk about the 4%. And then page 48 kind of goes through what I just talked about. And the only other thing is on the student, the extra classroom activity, the work, free findings. We have been working on those, and I think we get better every year, and it has to do with the cash receipts, you know, things like the positive and the timely manner. We've come a long way, and we're still working through that. It's not, it's not a perfect system, but, you know, that's where we are with that. So we, I think, you know, they do a really good job with it, but there are some pieces that need to be addressed. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. All in favor? Closed? Extentions? This brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. Any comments in the chat? Anyone here? Thank you. Brings us to roundtable. Start with Sue, because you went less, less, well, less, I think, too.
Um, so yesterday, I attended via Zoom the annual business meeting for NISBA, here at the board's meeting. It was a record one for me, I think this is my fourth that I've done, and this was four hours and 10 minutes. Which is definitely different than sitting in person doing it. I, this was a long one. I don't think it's a record for everyone, but it was for me. There were 276 districts represented, which also included BOSIs. Or was 200, so during the course of the meeting, towards the end, the votes go down, but they know how many people are still present, so as long as it stays above 200, they can conduct business. If it goes below that, the meeting has to end, and anything that wasn't resolved gets passed out to the following year. There were 27 resolutions, 17 of which passed. There was a bylaw amendment, which needed supermajority, which failed. They wanted some wording change as far as the in-person meetings for the business meeting. The passport, NISBA president proposed that, or BOSIs from, or, yeah, BOSIs from Nassau County, but it didn't pass. Like I said, I think it's my fourth, maybe fifth year doing it as a representative for the district. Each district gets one person that can be a delegate, and then it can be a backup normally when it's in person. You have someone who can be, and anybody can attend the meeting and be in the gallery. That's the same way as in person, I guess. I don't know if anybody was there yesterday during the meeting. I love it. I find it really rewarding, you get to play a part in what the school boards association, what their platform is going to be when it goes to the legislature, and what their focus will be on behalf of the school boards. This would normally be held on the weekend of the conference, which they went all remote this year. Would be the Saturday morning of the conference and starting at 8:00 AM, and that's the day when everybody else is leaving, and you have all of these people. So I think that in the future, they have talked about having it either virtually or possibly maybe at the beginning of the conference instead of the end like that. But it's a great opportunity to participate in setting the agenda for the upcoming year. I would love if someone else wanted to do it, but like I said, I really, I really enjoy it, so I have no problem.
You're really selling it, with that four hour meeting.
Well, it's, I don't know. As you know, it did go by fast, and I would say that by the end of it, I had it here. Had been there. But I highly recommend if someone else wants to do it at some point. But again, I, I really enjoy it. I worked a little bit with the, when we were pretty active in having the trainees at SUCA. I worked with the Shenango County Board School Association and did attempt to get an OTO County School Board Association, but there wasn't much interest. But I did work with them and dealing directly with NISBA. So I really enjoy it, but I'd be happy to share the role with anyone who's interested. And the fire?
Joan?
I was at the finance committee meeting yesterday where our audit was presented, and just wanted to say congratulations to the business office for completing the audit. It was a lot of work to prepare for and prove, but also a lot of work throughout the year to do that. So congratulations on getting through that, unmodified, I think.
That's great to thank yourself.
Yeah.
I too was at the finance committee meeting yesterday, and I know the work goes on here because it's that, I think it's about the next week. I mean, for something else. So there were a couple of topics that we discussed after we left with regards to, to the, the extracurricular funds and looking into what we have written as a policy and perhaps writing a policy or guideline for our extracurriculars to follow. We know John Schmarz is really great at what he does, and he's really great at what he does with what he has. And I just want to kind of close those loopholes of cash that might be flying around that we don't. And I want to thank Sue for her hard work and dedication. I, I did that prior to Sue. It is long and lengthy, and it's the last, especially when you're in person, it's the last thing you want to be doing at the end of the conference. I happily serve as the alternate, and unfortunately, Sue's gotten to enjoy it every year. But I, you know, I'd be happy to do it perhaps, and it is an interesting process to go through. And then lastly, Lisa and I are attending the annual insurance consortium next Friday.
I'd like to thank the administrators for your kind words, and Mr. Brown, you can well appreciate that. I'd also like to, section is starting, I think, this week for our sports team, so I would send the best of luck. And I too was at the finance committee meeting, and it was very informative. Doing a good job. We're, she's been my first meeting there, so it's nice.
Well, I feel bad, I won't say I attended it. Did, but I did, however, I'll get to that in a minute, but I want to say thank you to the subs who are coming on board. It's really a pivotal time for us to have extra help around here. Thank you very much for putting your hand in the ringer. Second thing I want to talk about is the, I see the middle school starting off the after-school program again, which after a year of COVID, sitting behind one of these things for the better part of several, several, several months, I think our students definitely benefited from it. So Tommy, you and your staff, thank you very much for putting it together and making it work. And I did have an opportunity to speak with your staff member, I mean, you've mentioned that it's going to be good, and I'm looking forward to see how the results are. And I hope the students and the parents that are, if the student's struggling, they're there. You know, Tommy, Tommy runs a great ship down there, and I'm hoping they take advantage of it. So the word will be obviously getting out or has been out, so please take, take advantage of the opportunity because it's, it's free access. You know, the teachers that are stepping up and offering their time, and they're second to none. I can just say that. This, next two things that kind of blended together. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to attend, attend the, this was Board Officers Academy Virtual Workshop that was presented by Mark Snyder, and those four hours of really good information, a lot of stuff that we're doing, maybe we can look at it a little differently. And really what it brought to me was looking at the, or the comments coming in. And it kind of goes into what you're all saying about how lucky we are for what we have. All the, I don't want to say nasty comments, but the way that some of these board of educations are being handled by their communities and the battle that they have with the teachers and the administration. I just sat there like, wow, thank goodness we don't have that here. The potential is always there, I get that. But, you know, I think Mark and the staff really handled it well. How is a president and a vice president, how do you handle these contentious parents or citizens of your community are coming in and constantly arguing about this, that, the other, not realizing that the Board of Education meetings is not a platform for you to stand out there and start pointing fingers and yelling a string? But again, I just, the kind of words you all say about us, we thank you, but I mean, in return, we're lucky to have what we have at the Oneonta School District. Not only from the administration all the way down to the staff. So thank you guys for everything you do for us. And it really, this kind of slide didn't know the comments you made. I was on my way home today, and it lies with me. And we always talk about what's going on tonight. So I said, hey, listen, I got a press appointment, I got a board meeting right after that, so I just took away a street to the board meeting. And she made a comment that was like, something to the fact of, why are you reporting education? And really, what you all just said is what I wanted to say. But what I did say to her, I explained it, I said, why not? She didn't know what to say. I mean, there's not a reason not to. I mean, you're giving back to your community, you're giving back to, you know, all the times you may have a comment or a concern about something in the district. Here's your opportunity to get on the Board of Education, understand how it's run. So when I said it to her, I was like, wow, I should have mentioned all the comments you all did. Thank you very much for the kind words, it really means a lot to me. During COVID, we didn't have a lot of meetings because we couldn't get together. Now we are, and I love hearing the other committee meetings that we have. We get together to talk about it later on. But it's just, we're going in the right direction, we're getting there. And I'll tell my, I'm tired of wearing masks, so it's like everybody else is, we understand that, but we're still getting the job done. And I think as a group, we will get there sooner or later. Because right now, I'm sweating inside this mask. So I just want to make kind of, thank you very much for the kind words, and, you know, we're moving forward as we always will. Tommy, thank you, and we see for every occasion. At a weekly basis, I can't say thank you enough. So that's all I have. And we thank you, I can't say thank you enough. So that's all I have.
That's all?
That's it. Got it off my chest.
Sue, I want to say thank you because not only do you attend the four-hour meeting to read all the stuff beforehand. That's 25. Yeah, 25 hours. That's, that's period. So thank you for representing us and for sticking that out. And certainly there are some benefits to virtual meetings.
There are.
The, we're trying to re-jumpstart the Equity and Inclusion Committee meeting. I have some a poll out to the members to try and get the next meeting set. Any of the board members want to join the committee with me? Let me know. You're welcome. I want to say thank you again to everyone for everything you do and, you know, especially, you know, we kind of had a rocky road getting started with the buses this year. I think we, a little closer. I did see the City of Utica is trying to get the national bus to come up and drive buses, so I'm glad we're not in that shape. So again, appreciate it for everything that you all did. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personal.